Please pray with me. Dear my Father God, we love you, but we just praise your name for all things. We thank you for the many blessings you give. God, tonight we ask a special blessing on Officer Tyler Franks. We pray that you would just heal him. Pray that you would just be with his family and his department over there, Lord. I pray that you just continue to protect all those who protect us. God, we ask for wisdoms this evening as decisions are being made. We pray that all things would just honor you. We love you, in your name we pray. Amen.
Samantha going to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, and her God, neither is one, but the unity and justice for all.
All right, we'll go ahead and convene our meeting. Start with a roll call. Misty Cottle?
Here.
Jeff Upton?
Here.
Dan Throgmorton? Marty Lindebury?
Here.
John Collins?
Here.
Dana McKnight?
Here.
Stephen Pence? Don Rollins? Our city attorney and city clerk are both present. The first item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes that need to be made? Everybody okay with all the items that are currently on the agenda? Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion when you approve the agenda.
I'll say it.
We have a motion in second. All those in favor say yes. Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Next is the approval of our meeting minutes from April 13th. Do we have any changes that need to be made to those? Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion when you approve the minute says no. I'll say it again.
We have a motion in second. All those in favor say yes. Those opposed, no. That motion carries. All right, thank you all for that. We're back in the courtroom. It's nice to be back in here. It's beautiful. Tracy's doing a fantastic job keeping the place up. It's nice. Thank you. So, next item on our agenda, we'll get back into it. I just wanted to point that out, that we're back here and I'm happy to be back. Remember, is everyone's microphone is on? I kind of forgot about having microphones. People will be able to hear us on YouTube. All right, so, the next item on the agenda is the public forum. Do we have anyone who would like to address the city council? Okay, close the public forum and we will move into our business reports. We'll start with the planning commission? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Make sure that microphone's on.
Chad's going to lead it.
All right, then, good evening. So, last meeting was in a whole lot. We had one lot split. It was Terra Firma's lot that they had bought and for that tiny home kind of park. Well, they split it into three and so now it's going to be property whatever. It's mostly commercial, so who knows what it's going to end up being if it's a house or whatever it's going to be. And other than that, we're still moving ahead with the draft of the proposal. We're pretty well set on the text of it for the most part. There's some stuff that's still going to pop up here and there, but we're going to be really moving on to the future land use map here, so that's the next big thing and having that TV is going to help.
So, I have an update for Walter. Does anyone in the council have questions for Walter? So, I have an update for you, Walter.
Update, great.
I have reached out to Juliette Ritchie with Garber and Associates and have asked her to come in and help us with some of our planning. I was at a mayor's meeting a couple of weeks ago. Some of the other towns are doing the same thing. They're getting basically a planning engineer involved with their councils to help kind of...
Right, yeah.
To make some explanations, to facilitate the meetings, answer questions. So, I've talked to her about that. She, we have gave her copies of both of our zoning ordinances, the current zoning ordinance and the planned zoning ordinance, just so she could kind of be aware of where you guys are. I don't know when she will reach out, but she'll probably reach out to you, but then she'll probably come to a meeting just to kind of get a feel for it and then she'll start working probably with you and the entire planning board just to help facilitate it.
Sounds helpful.
Yeah, I think it will be. I think it'll be, I think it'll be good. She kind of, she said, "Well, what about the, what about the future zoning map? What about comprehensive planning?" And I said, "Well, we kind of thought we'd do that after the zoning." And she goes, "Well, sometimes it helps if you put those on the front end." So, anyway, I think it'll be a huge, a huge bonus to have her working with us for a little while.
Good to see you.
Yeah, you know her?
Good to know. Thank you much.
All right, thanks, Walter. Next is our court report. Tracy?
Well, you guys can see the report. Our tickets were down a little bit this month, but year to year, we're up a little bit from last year. Our discers were down on the lot. We went from seventy-three thousand down to about forty-six thousand. And that's the only thing I have on that. We did hire, I did hire the new court clerk. She's from Melbourne and her name is Jessica Pouncy. And I always think Tabor. I'm just saying it was Pouncy, so anyway. I practice it every time I think about Melbourne, so anyway, she's been here for about a week and a half now and it's a lot to take in. She said, "Now, how long did it take you to get this?" And I said, "I still learn something new every single day." And so, she's, she's working on it, but she does not have court experience. She has tons of data entry experience. She's real, she's pleasant. I like her phone manner and stuff like that, so I think she's going to work out pretty good. Okay.
Any questions for Tracy? Next is our library report. Shannon?
Well, we were invited for your day at the school and we had a really great time. We used it as an opportunity to tell people about our careers, but also to ask the teens' advice because we want to start working on better team programming. So, we got a lot of really great input and we plan to implement starting over this summer, that focusing on teens, as usual, our preschool and elementary age and middle school, and then also we're continuing more adult programs. We created Instagram. Most of you probably seen our Facebook, and then we also have a brand new website I don't think I've mentioned. Our children's library in Marie also created our website from scratch, so you all should go check it out. It looks amazing. And Friends of Library, they're having a benefit sale, May 21st and 22nd. We're working on getting asphalt for the parking lot, so I know right now a lot of our patrons say, "This beautiful building," and then we have a lovely puddle right at the entrance. So, working on that and getting quotes as we speak, so hopefully over the summer we'll be able to get that done. And then working also on our summer reading program, so a couple of things. We have our kickoff, June 5th, from 10:00 to noon, and then over the summer we'll do a virtual live Zoom with Sharps, and that's for everyone. And we'll continue with escape rooms and Dr. Smithers is on board to do something with animals. The theme is Tales and Tails. So, stay tuned for that. That's all I have for today.
Any questions for Shannon? Thank you. Next is our police report. Chief Nelson?
Move that up a little bit. We had seventy-nine citations for the month, fifty-two warnings and sixty-eight warrants served. Some of the stuff that I wanted to mention, we wanted to congratulate Dodgers on the new baby boy. That happened this month, so.
Congratulations, Officer Guy.
Boy number two. He also got a good compliment. He, a lady came to the police department. She was very, very happy that he helped her change her tire in the rain. So, keep doing that.
The rain had pretty much stopped, I should say.
Yeah, we also got, we also got a, we also got a, not a complaint, but a accolade on Officer Shelby, who I guess saw one of the Dollar General girls walking home in the rain and offered to give her a ride home, so I thought that was pretty nice. We are out there doing some friendly things. We've got a blood drive coming up that's supposed to be, as I understand it, we've got a meeting at nine in the morning with police versus the fire department. Well, he said, I believe or fire chief said he wasn't going to be a part of it unless they were going to win. Well, it's about a hundred to six, so if they don't win, something's wrong. But we'll do our best. Of course, we all know the deal that happened with the break of, very, very tough situation. Our officers, some of our, well, one of our officers took part in that, a young officer. All I'd say is, thank God there was another officer there that saved his life. In a normal situation, that could have cost him his life. If we ever have funding or we ever have any situation that we can come up on where we can have two guys working at night, I would like to see that for our officer's safety. I think about that a lot. If that would have happened in Westwood, we probably would have lost an officer. So, if anything comes up, I'd just like you guys to think about that and give it serious thought.
Even if it's a two-man unit, one unit, two men in it.
Absolutely, just something. True. So, that's all I've got for you guys. Any questions?
Any questions? Do you have counsel? So, Chief, before you sit down, I would, I know we're talking about doing some stuff with code enforcement, but if you could have someone check the current situation up on Valley View off Red Oak.
Okay. What do we have going on? I know we, that's Hidden Creek. What's going on?
No, just, just some of the trash and stuff. I think, I think we've addressed it before.
Okay. Now, let them check that out.
Yeah, have them check that out until we get some...
We've got a couple of ongoing ones right now. Align that to the list.
Okay.
At least give them a letter or do something to get them on, on the right track.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Next, Public Works. Mr. Hardison?
Didn't have anything for your packet. Nick didn't have his handout handed out. I hope to have a committee meeting next month, so you'll get some minutes in there. I need to get them caught up. Not a whole lot from us. We were trying to keep up with grass when between rain showers. We were able to get a 200-foot main extension on Hidden Creek for the Ruth Wilpersen property for, for a new house going in there, so we completed that. Probably in the next couple of months, all we're going to be doing is fixing some of the places we tore up, so the big holes in the road we made and bomb blasting people's yards, we're going to get some of that wrapped up before, before summer hits. Maybe the weather will properly. Nick is here, is going to give you an update on the sewer. I will let you know that the pipe is in on McKnight Street on this part. They're starting the testing and cleanup process there and then they will be moving to Westwood. And they'll, they got about fourteen hundred foot to replace there, so. We initially thought they were going to go to the school. We're still waiting on some surveying for the schools, so Nick had all the shots for Westwood, so they're going to go there first, so.
Are we doing Dog Street or are they?
Dog Street, I really hope we got some money left to offer that up to them because it is deep. It's ten or twelve foot there, so it's going to be a challenge. They got, they got the big toys to handle that, so, so yeah, if at all possible, we'd like to let them do that, so. Nick, an update on the big project and where we're at. We're getting close to wrapping that up. You don't have anything for me?
He just kind of snuck off there, didn't he? Nick's here, he'll update you.
That's the difference, standing on the podium again. Yeah, I got the handout, I passed out. Go through it quickly here. We did have a minor issue with some, a couple air release valves at the lift station a couple of weeks ago with the, with the heavy, heavy rains and the high flows. We have gotten those resolved. Got the, got the rep up here to replace the insides of both of those, so we should be back in good shape there. I think, I think it seemed like we got a rag or something or a wipe caught in one of the valves.
Baby wipe.
Baby wipe that held it open, so it was spraying out everywhere, but it all stayed contained in the valve pit that we designed and everything was just more of a nuisance. Some little bit of cleanup work that had to be done. We're working through the punch list with the contractor. They do have some cleanup, quite a bit of cleanup they still need to do, but they're starting to plug away at it. So, as I mentioned, we're wrapping up McKnight Street, moving over to Westwood, going to try to get some manuals for the contractor to order here in the next few days. Hopefully, maybe by the end of the week, we can get that to them. And we've got some additional surveying to do out in the school area. We're going to do some realigning out there to, to make that system work a little better. Along on the construction admin side, we're just, we don't have our observer out full-time like we did. They're just out there when they're doing punch list items. And jumping down on the closure plan, we did start all in bio solids at the end of the month. Got about a weekend and the contractor has, has stopped work, has put in a change of order request. Isaac's built, built in on it. We made some progress today. We're, I don't know if you've seen the revised email or not, but we're, we're getting there. I think we're, we're coming to a resolution quickly on that so we can get them back out there working. We did get our CIO extension approved in the last month by, by the Department of Environmental Quality. And let's see what else really that's, we're just doing month of reports to DQ and just trying to get everything wrapped up, so. Got any questions?
Misty, do you have any questions for Nick?
God, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Chad, before you come up, Walter, I was going to let you know that Isaac and I and Christie as well met with a developer on Smith Street. Did I tell you, have I told you about that?
Maybe not.
So, they're, they're looking at twenty-nine lots over there and Isaac's talked to them about some sewer tie-ins, some street work, some different things like that, but I would, I would think they would be coming to you in the next month or two. They're, they're going to, I think they're going to be asking for a variance on a few lots in the subdivision, not meeting the, they're, they're coming in a little under seven thousand square feet on the lot size rather than the eight thousand. So, anyway, just so you'll have that with you and let the council know when you meet.
Okay.
All right, Chad. Oh, Isaac, did you have something for me?
I'll get when you have to move.
Okay.
I did get a number on probably a guy over Smith Street.
Okay. Go ahead, Chad, take it away.
So, I just want to point out a couple of things that are in your packet. One is our Independence Day celebration. We did make some decisions there. We are going to hold at the park event. It's going to be kind of a combination of what we used to do, what we did last year. The show itself will be more like the show of the past. You'll need to come to the park for the best viewing, but we, we are going to eliminate whatever you do, the food or the water slides and things. Those are things that make the biggest problem of congestion and trouble for that, so. But we are going to go ahead and have music before. I'm working with Francis Carson. I'll get them lined up. We're going to move it onto one of our fields so people can spread out and enjoy it more. And there may be another event or two, but those are, that's going to be the main things, the music and the fireworks show. We'll start getting that advertised probably early next month so people can understand that it won't be the same event in the past, but they will still need to come to the park and we'll be able to do it in a safe manner. Also, the disc golf tournament that we do have scheduled on the 19th, I'm pretty excited about that. It's really, we've had one down there, but Parks Department itself wasn't that involved in it and this one will be, it's going to be a good event, I think. And then another thing, I don't know if y'all saw on Facebook, a post that Chief Nelson put out with his department on about the vandalism at the community center. There was a lot of comments on that. I just want to assure you, it was not an animal. It's person that you can call an animal, I guess, because what they're doing is pretty, pretty bad, but it's happened on more than one occasion. They're actually even, they're dumping stuff, they're putting bags in the trash. Animals don't do that. They put some bags back in there. We'd actually cleaned a lot of it up before I took the pictures. Christie suggested taking some pictures and we already cleaned some of it up. There's several cans. I don't know who it is, but someone's getting in there and tearing up food that's meant to help people and it's very angry, so. We are going to look at adding an additional camera possibly at the community center that'll cover that pavilion and some of that, and if not, we're going to move that food pantry so the work can be viewed.
So, a couple of things on that. If you remember Jennifer Johnson, that her class was kind of behind putting that. Her husband called me end of last week and to let me know that they were wanting to take it down, rebuild it. He said they never, never realized that it would stay up that long and they didn't build it for those kind of elements, so they are wanting to, to take it down. It'll probably come down this week.
Oh, okay.
And they're basically just going to rebuild it. So, I did want to let you know that in case somebody, in case you drive by and say, "Notice it's missing."
Okay, good. And maybe I can get with them before they put it back up.
Right. I would like to...
Possibly a better spot.
And I, and I would like to keep it somewhere somewhat secluded because I feel like it gets more use, the fact that it is kind of out of the way.
Sure.
But I do agree that we may need to get some surveillance on it.
And we can possibly, you know, we, we have a camera on that other corner, the opposite corner that shows the dumpster and stuff, so there'll be something to hally away. We're still got to be secluded, but sometimes it could be on the cam.
Okay.
Or we may have a camera, we'll see. Looking into that, but I just, it's not an issue. I think that's it.
Any questions for Chad?
I will say on the Fourth of July event, we won't need as many workers, but anyone is more welcome. Any of y'all that want to volunteer and help with whatever, getting waters out and handing out ice cream and helping crowd control and all that, we're still looking for the volunteers and the lack of help, so.
Have you talked to Shannon about getting us some video of the fireworks show?
Not recently, but yes, we've, we've talked about if, if we did a show like that again, so we might, we might, we'll definitely get a photo and work something out or we can get it on Facebook Live or something again. Okay. That's it.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Shannon, what did we decide about Ask the Mayor for this month?
We did not, but I can do Thursday if you're open for that.
I am. Same timeframe?
That's great.
Okay. You can just send me an email with a specific time. All right, Chief Myers?
You might forgive me or something.
No, no, no. Yeah, around three o'clock I should be...
We do have our floor in the fire station now. I think it looks good. Trying to piece together the trim. I didn't take it apart, so it's kind of a chore to, or I wish it was a little earlier, but it looks real good. You might, you might take a look at it. Last I heard on our radio updates, they've collected more than enough money for us already, so I think we're going to do really, really good with that. They're looking, they're saying April 2022. I think that's kind of early, in my opinion. We have a lot of trouble with one of our trucks in Greenland. Been in the shop on and off quite a bit since February. Luckily, we reached out to a neighboring fire department. They loaned us a vehicle to use in its place. Not that they were going to mention over in public, so I'm not going to mention them in public, but we do appreciate them letting us do that. We just, we talked today, me and the guys, about doing, as John said about Officer Franks, trying to do, we were just going to do it through ourselves, have an fireman donate money, but we'd kind of put up anybody that wants to do that and we're welcome to collect the money. We're going to do it probably through Monday and then try to deposit it into one of our discounts or something, so. Do it in the name, we were going to do it in the Westwood Fire Department name, but I'd be happy to do it in the city name, whatever we want to do. I have two, three people that are collecting the money for me, so anybody that feels some free that they want to do that, we're welcome to, so. And with the floor, our guys put it in ourselves, thanks to Brian Kickline and all his, he had all he has on family at one time do it, so thanks to all those guys that did that. Other than that, that's really all I've got.
Any questions for Chief Myers?
The Black Lives Matter Blood Drive, is that blood boots and badges? Is that like a community blood drive or is that just something else?
Yes, no, it'll be an open to the community. And like I said, we're having a meeting tomorrow, so I don't fully understand it, but somebody will come in and say, "We're here to support the fire department," or the police department, whichever. It's a friendly competition between the two of who can get the water from the nation. You'll get a tee-shirt saying, "I support the fire department," or the police department, who I'm going to even get some of my guys to cook, you know, if you're supporting the fire department, so. So, we'll find out after tomorrow when we're going to do it.
Okay, you don't...
Because I think blood supply is still very critically loaded.
Oh, that, yeah, they are. So, you can't eat if you support the police department?
They don't have time to learn how to cook. They might just want to deal with it.
Anything else for Chief Myers? Thank you, sir.
And so, the Monangels look really good. We're up a hundred and twelve thousand in bank balances this year. We are a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars under budget and all of the departments are under budget except the street department, but still showing almost sixteen thousand over budget and that will, I think, work itself out throughout the year. That has to do with that fifty thousand dollar check that we had to write for the street paving that the state's helping us with. Sales tax is still up, still increasing each month, fourteen percent more than we were this time last year for city sales tax. Any questions, Monangels? Hopefully, when you drill up tonight, you saw that the building has been painted. It, it looks pretty good. There's some places that still don't look great, but they could not fix the mortar in those areas, but they are coated, so it should be sealed, even though the stem of the mortar is still kind of loose. Hopefully, that will, the seal will at least keep the water out, so. But overall, it looks much better. They used, he said like a hundred and two gallons between primer and paint, so it's got a lot on it and hopefully that will help with the moisture. We've got one of the awnings out front that's ripped and Tracy's got some community service people that are going to start doing some work, so we're going to start with having them clean the awnings for us and then once we've got them all cleaned, we'll get the ones repaired that need repaired. We have started getting people to sign up for an emergency alert system. We have one that is in conjunction with our water website. Right now, we have a hundred and twenty-five people enrolled on it, so we still need to have some discussions on exactly how we want to use that and what situations we want to use it, but we do at this point, at this time, have the potential to email and/or text whatever people choose to sign up. So, if you haven't signed up yet, you can go through the city website. We'll get you to the water website. We'll go straight to the water website and sign up for alerts there. And then the only other thing I think I have is the American Rescue Plan. The league has, I guess, gotten some final...
A hundred and fifty-one pages of directives today.
Of directives on that and how it can be used and all that, so we're going to have, they're going to start doing trainings. This Thursday's the first one. And I think they'll do those probably weekly for a long time. So, I'll be trying to stay on top of those and hopefully we'll be getting some money before long that we can do some stuff with it, so.
Looking good for water and soon, maybe for streets, but definitely water and soon.
Any questions?
Any questions for Christie? No? Don't sit down just yet. Um, so we don't have any old business. We don't have any new business tonight. Do we have any other business?
Well, I just have a couple of things.
Fantastic. Go ahead, take a seat for a few minutes.
I'm sorry. Do you want to let her go?
No.
Oh, okay. So, um, I had a citizen contacting me. I contacted you well because they were asking about the planned usage when the sewer area, I don't know what to call it, but when all the cleanup is done and, and completed and what we were going to use that property for. So she was just asking, so I told her we didn't have any firm plans as of now. Um, invited her to city council meetings whenever we talk about that. But she brought up a good point that she doesn't necessarily know when we're going to talk about it. And so I mentioned to Christie, maybe we could start posting your agenda. Whenever we say we're going to have a city council meetings or the items to be discussed. So citizens know when they might be interested in coming.
Sure.
So that was one thing that we talked about. Um, and then somebody, I'm not knowledgeable about this, so I probably shouldn't try to talk about it. But on Facebook, somebody was talking about their property taxes and the mileage rates and how much of their money goes to this school. And that was a considerable amount. Um, and somebody commented that the city council voted on that, which I wanted to clarify. And some people did on Facebook that we did not vote on that. Um, that's not our decision to make. That was voted upon by other, you know, by the citizens and other avenues. And then I also looked at some of the rates just to compare us to other school districts. And we are actually near the bottom of the list in terms of, if I was correct. Like we're below, um, Lincoln, Crayford, Elkins, Farmington, Fayetteville, all the big ones. We're just above Greenland by six tenths of a percent. So we're not outlandishly out of proportion with any other school district or any other city in the area. So I just wanted to provide that information for the people that were maybe concerned about those issues on Facebook. And I don't know if they're watching tonight, but I just thought I'd leave that information out there for people, so.
Fantastic.
You can look that up on the Washington County website. Like I didn't come up with that. That's my knowledge that anybody can look up, so.
Yeah, so, and did you, did you reach out to them on Facebook to clarify that?
No, I didn't.
No? Yeah, and that's, that's the problem is, you know, you try to clarify something and one, it either gets buried or two, uh, you just get barraged with, um, a lot of unfactual comments, so. But thank you for that because you're exactly right.
And we do vote on our own, which is limited to five.
Yes, okay, yes.
Well, no, we don't vote on the schools.
Correct.
Or several others, but, um, it's going to be clear. So we vote on.
On a million.
It's miniscule as compared to the school.
Right.
Thank you. Like I said, I'm not knowledgeable, so I'm glad the email was ready.
Okay. So Christie, if, if you would come back up, since we don't really have any new business.
You're going to sing us a song.
No, I was just going to take a minute. We, we have a couple of new council members. Um, and, and I know that when, or newer, I shouldn't say new, but newer. Uh, and Stephen's not here tonight, but, uh, sometimes the financials can get a little, um, daunting. Um, and so I just, I wanted to point out Christie does a fantastic job of not only keeping track of our financials, but of providing double checks for our financials. And so, um, you didn't really have to come back up here, but you might as well because I may have questions too.
We're on the spot.
Yeah. But I wanted to point out, so if you look at the last page of your, um, of your agenda packet and the first page of your statement of revenue and expenses that Christie sends you. So on the top of that, she's showing what our bank balance is and, and how much cash we are increasing or decreasing through the month. But then in the middle of that spreadsheet, on the, on the far right, if you'll notice, she has, um, the various departments listed out and broke out there and what they are, um, what their balance is for, uh, for each, each fund, each department. Are you guys following me? You know where I'm at? So I wanted to make sure that everyone knew that that corresponds to our statement of revenue and expenses. So if you turn the first page, to the back of the first page, and the second column to the right, so we are on the general fund. If you come down that second column to the right, the bottom of that column will match what the general fund has on the other sheet. Are you guys following me? No? Right, we'll get there. There you go. That, so you see the general fund?
Thank you. Oh, yeah. Thanks.
Yeah. So Christie takes the time and, and the reason Christie does this is, Christie would tell you she does this so you guys, um, can, can track this. But why she actually does is because it helps her double check and make sure she's not making any mistakes. But it's, it's a fantastic resource for us, um, to be able to go through and look at all these budgets. And not only look at them, but verify that, um, this is a quick check for us too, to make sure that everything is accurate. So, um, and she has it broke out for every, uh, every department. Um, as you flip through your statement of income and expense, those will match up all the way through. And I promise you they match up.
Every time?
Every time. Um, but I, I wasn't, I wasn't sure if everyone was aware that that double check is in there and wanted to point that out to you because Christie is doing a fantastic job of, of providing us with data. Sometimes she doesn't explain to us everything that she provides, so. Um, and then we'll, we'll have another training session and, um, uh, Tracy can explain her, her reports as well, but. Anyway, any questions over those financials? Um, I know that sometimes we're not aware of some of the things that are in those, but. Nothing? No?
The state considers the council to have a fiduciary duty to know what's in the financials. We learned that is one of the first things they ever did to work for. We took that court, presented counsel to the city of Long to meet with the committee on special body. We told that.
And so you're saying that the, the state considers the council to have a fiduciary responsibility?
To know your financials because they are the people who are in charge of the financials.
Right.
Of the money in the cities that have it scheduled or not. And so, you know.
It is, it is.
On a lot of cities where you can track every dime like in this one.
Agreed. Agreed. So I do have one question for you, Christie. Do you have, um, the, uh, financials in front of you? But you probably notice I'll drop your head anyways. So in the water, wastewater fund?
Yes.
We have a miscellaneous line item that's starting to grow.
Miscellaneous?
Yeah, that's, that's why I'm asking.
I don't know. I'll have to check on it and be back with you. I don't know.
So a couple of things while we have Christie here, um, I'll put you on the spot. I wouldn't want to do this, but, um, we went through this pretty quick. I told my wife I'd be home soon.
I use computer programs for a reason.
I do too, so I don't have to memorize everywhere. So we all know that we have, we're, we're now tied into Fayetteville. We're, we're paying Fayetteville to treat our sewer. What, we've brought this up a couple of times. We, we've increased our rates. The question is, is are our rates covering what we're paying to Fayetteville and covering what that bond is costing? And so we, we, we took out a bond, we borrowed money. Uh, we haven't had to start paying that back yet.
October.
In October. And that will be at how much per month?
Well, over 14,000 a month.
Okay. And that comes to how much per year? About 160,000, 168,000 a year? Um, so what I'm getting at is if you look at the, the very, it's not the very back page, but, um, the third page from the back of that, you have the water fund. And if you, so in the top part of, the way these financial statements are set up, the revenue's in the top, the income, and the expenses are, are below that. But we have our income from sewer sales. Can everyone see that? $54,884 for the month of April. Are you guys following me?
Mm-hmm.
And so then if you look down into the expense section, the bottom section, you can see what our city of Fayetteville sewer fees are. It's, uh, $35,853. Everybody following that? Is that a yes? Um, so if, if you look at that, we, we covered our fees to the city of Fayetteville for the month of April, correct? Um, and if we, if we add on to that, that our bond payment will be 14,000 and some change each month, we still covered it, right? Because we, what do we have roughly $19,000 difference? Right? Everybody following me? So that was a good month. They're not all good months.
Not at all.
Um, and so Christie is, is following that, her and Isaac are both following that. To kind of see where we're at, uh, Isaac and I are going to meet with, um, is it Dean that we're meeting with?
Probably Alan.
Alan, uh, from the state, um, to talk about where we are with, with what, what we're collecting versus what we're, what we're paying. And so with some of these big rain events that we've had, uh, there have been some months that, we, we've always covered the Fayetteville portion, correct?
Yes.
But there have been some months that we would not have been able to cover the bond portion. So just kind of giving you guys a heads up on that. Now, Nick and Isaac, that's exactly what they're trying to figure out with the sewer construction projects they're doing is getting that, that eye and eye out so that this bill to Fayetteville goes down. Okay, so I want you guys to know that you should, Nick, we should be able to see a direct correlation in that, correct? We're holding, we're holding Nick accountable on that.
You explain that though, that you fill in that middle part. So why would the bill to Fayetteville go down?
Sure.
Eye and eyes dress.
Sure. So right now, uh, when we flush the toilet, that goes to Fayetteville and they bill us for that. It's sewage, right? However, when, when we have a rain event and we're having groundwater get into our sewer pipes because we have holes in them, cracks in them, different things. As far as Fayetteville is concerned, that is sewage too, even though it's rainwater, it's in that sewer pipe. So it becomes treatable sewage. And so that's where our issue is. We, we sell about 40 million gallons a year in the city of Westport. That's how much water we sell to all of the city residents. But we're treating 80 to 120 million gallons. So two to three times more than what we're selling is what we're actually treating or what we're paying the city of Fayetteville to treat. And so if we can get that eye and eye down, um, to where the city of Fayetteville is only treating actual sewage, uh, from the city of Westport, that bill, that should, bill should be cut in half, um, potentially. Now, Nick's over there going, whoa, whoa, whoa. Half is a big step, but, but we should with these, these three or four projects that we currently have in place. We are hoping to see, uh, and I ask you guys to, to continue to monitor that, uh, that line item in particular because we should see it start to come down. Um, and if we look at that, if you, so while we're, while we're in this, uh, the first column is the current period. So it would be the last month that we just came through. The next column is year to date, so January to the last month that we just came through. Uh, the third column would be what we budgeted for the entire year. The fourth column is the variance. So that's, we budgeted this amount for the year. We've used a certain amount. The difference is our variance. Okay? Um, and then Christie went ahead and added that fifth column, which is a percent of budget. So you guys can track that. We're in the, we've came through the first quarter. Um, if you, if you look at our revenues, they should be roughly 33% of what our yearly budget is because we've came through that first quarter. We've got three quarters left to go. Um, and she, so she has those percentages. You can, you can see really quick if we're getting out of, out of adjustment on something with that percentage line out there. But on the city of Fayetteville sewer, if you guys, if you guys added that up to see where we, uh, where we currently are, um, we're currently about $100,000 to the good through April. So, so that being said, we're looking at four months at $14,000 a month. That doesn't, that doesn't reach $100,000. So, so far this year, we technically, we could have paid our bill each month, even though some months we couldn't have. Did that make sense? Okay.
Just keeping in mind that you're only talking about two bills. We have other sewer bonds and obviously other long-term debt. So just making those two payments isn't quite enough. But, I mean, it would be great if we could know that we were going to make those two, but there's, there are other bonds and, and long-term debts involved also.
We kind of brought negative Nancy to the podium.
But she knows the law requires, state law requires that this city council set rates at a level that pays the expenses for sewer. They don't have a choice. You can't.
Right.
You can't operate in red in your sewer. You can't do it, so. We have to, we must be raised rates. We have to figure out a way to meet all our obligations.
Yes. And so that, that is a very good, very good point. And that's, Isaac and I, that's what we're going to meet with Dean or Alan about. Um, one, to, to see where we are. Uh, Christie discovered in the, when they initially set these rates, uh, Christie realized that they didn't take a couple of things into consideration. As she tried to reach out to them, the person who did those calculations had left the state. And so it, it became, um, kind of a mess. Um, and so they know that there, there may be some, some problems with the rates. Now, the last thing I want to do is have another rate increase. Um, and, and I hope that we, we don't have to. We're, we're doing pretty, we're doing pretty good. Uh, hopefully some of these projects that Nick and Isaac are in the middle of are going to help that, so.
Hopefully we get a handle on the, the expert given.
Right. Right. But I want you guys to be aware of what, what line items are specifically tracking that. Did I miss anything, Christie?
You explain it better than I do.
So any questions from anyone else about those, any of that? Anything on the budget? No? John says he's ready to go home.
There is a.
Uh, one other thing I wanted to point out, uh, that Christie does for us is at the back of our, um, agenda packet, back to that sheet, there is, it's in the middle on the far right, she's got the cash increase. And we've talked about this before, but it's been about a year ago. So we have in the far right column, our net income or loss. But, um, one line down and back to the left, we have the cash increase or loss. Does everybody see that? And so the difference there, um, in most of that is bond payments or loan payments. So loans are not an expense. Christie does count some of our loans as an expense so that we can see that. But I think that's our difference here.
Not really.
Not really?
It's more, so the income and expense reports are not, do not cover every bank account. So it covers, so we have fire department CDs. We have a corporate retirement fund. We have other bank accounts that aren't necessarily tied in with the income and expense reports. So those bank balances are all of our actual cash balances combined for that month. So where the income and expense reports are just based on the budgets.
Our departments, okay. Does that make sense to everybody? But the, the reason I bring it up, there's, there's a big difference. Um, if you look at it and you're like, man, $200,000 almost under budget, right? That seems like a lot, but our actual cash increase is 112, which is still fantastic. Don't get me wrong, in a city our size, that is, that is phenomenal that our departments are managing in their budgets that well. But I just wanted to let you, make sure you guys are aware, there is a difference between net income versus net cash.
Even if you was at 200,000, one big disaster, you wouldn't have much come in.
But, and that's a valid point and.
And some of those are also restricted funds, so we can't necessarily use those for just anything.
Yeah. And that's, these guys don't.
It sounds great.
They don't buy anything small, right? Chief Nelson just bought, you know, a $30,000 car. Um, Chad bought a $30,000 field machine a couple of years ago. Um, everything's expensive. So that, that's a good point.
Should apply with 411.
All right, Christie. Thank you all for bearing with me as we went through that. If there's no other questions, do we have a motion to adjourn?
A second.
We have a motion and second. Those in favor, say yes. Those opposed, no. That motion carries, we are adjourned.